Good morning, welcome to our January 21st, 2020 Wayne County Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone to either turn off or silence your cell phone at this time. And today, I have the invocation and Commissioner Bill Pate has the Pledge of Allegiance. Let us pray. Dear Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this country that we live in, that we can live the way that we would basically like to, that we're able to come and express our opinions. Father, we ask that the decisions that we make as a board, that we might would ask for your wisdom, that we might would ask for good common sense and consider all the citizens of Wayne County. Father, we thank you again for being able to come and meet in this United States of America, where we have the freedoms that we are experiencing. I ask, Lord, that you might would bless our first responders, our firemen, our sheriff and police departments. Father, I ask that you might bless the military today, as they are servants around this world. Father, we ask that you might give them an extra measure of safety each and every day. These things I ask in your name, amen. Please stand in face of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Pate. We have next on the agenda the approval of minutes for January 7th, 2020.
I move approve.
All in favor of the approval of the minutes for January 7th, raise your right hand, please. Okay, motion carries. Discussion and adjustment of the agenda, Mr. Honeycutt.
No adjustment at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, have a motion to approve the agenda, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries. Mr. Honeycutt, special presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to have the sheriff come up as well. We have three special presentations, and the first one is a motion to approve Resolution 2020-1, a resolution awarding service weapon to Lieutenant Michael Smiley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning and make this presentation. I'll ask Lieutenant Michael Smiley to come forward, please. Again, we have a situation where we're losing one of our good folks to retirement, and he's-
He's too young to retire.
That's true. And he's served us for many years in the capacity of a deputy, and I'll look himself up through the ranks to retire as a lieutenant, and I think he's going to stay in law enforcement in a reserve capacity with us and be a teacher at the college in the law enforcement area. So, he's staying in the field. So, this time, this will be a plaque from the county, presented to Michael Smiley, Sheriff's Office, appreciation of 18 years of dedicated service as a county employee, January 7th, 2002 to January 6th, 2020, the county of Wayne in North Carolina. Congratulations, officer.
And Lieutenant, this is your sidearm that you carried to protect the citizens
of Wayne County for many years, and it's for Lieutenant Dennis Michael Smiley for meritorious service, dedication, loyalty, friendship, and professionalism that you have demonstrated during your career. Your presence will be missed, but your accomplishment this morning will not be forgotten. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make a motion, and my motion is-
Yeah, we got to make a motion.
That we authorize the issuance of the service weapon to Lieutenant Michael Smiley.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is motion to approve Resolution 2020-2, a resolution awarding service weapon to Sergeant Ron Colter.
I hear a motion. Abandon. Okay, have a motion to approve the resolution awarding the service weapon to Sergeant Ron Colter, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. Okay, motion carries.
Sergeant Colter was delayed this morning and could not be here at this point, but I will present him his plaque and service weapon later this morning, if that's okay? All right.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. President. Could we go back to Lieutenant Smiley's? I think the resolution says Sergeant, is that a misprint, or?
No doubt. My apologies, I'll get that page.
Okay, thank you.
And also get help.
All right, thank you. We will correct that. Okay, Mr. Honeycutt?
Next, number three, is special recognition of Corporal Jonathan Bachelor.
Mr. Chairman, Corporal Bachelor could not be here this morning either, but I did want to bring it to your attention that four years ago, the board saw fit to form a DWI Task Force through the Sheriff's Office, and it has progressively grown as far as our numbers and statistics, and has been quite an accomplishment for our county, I think. And one of our deputies that is, works through the DWI Task Force is Corporal Bachelor, and two years in a row now, he has been awarded a distinguished award for Drug Recognition Expert for the state of North Carolina for the Sheriff's Offices. And I just wanted to mention that to you, let you know what was going on. Drug recognition experts is a very hard achievement to obtain in the fact that it takes about six months of studying and testing before you can become that. And if you're familiar with the breathalyzer, basically, a drug recognition expert does not have to have a breathalyzer to determine if you're impaired. And as you know, there are so many impairing substances now that we're facing that the breathalyzer wouldn't pick up on. So, he is able to examine you basically like a physician does, and taking your blood pressure, temperature, different tests that he gives you to determine if you're impaired or not. So, I just wanted to bring that out, but these are the accomplishments that was, or the honors that was presented to him during the last training in December. Outstanding performance as a DRE, platinum performance as a DRE, one of only five in the state, and top performing DRE expert from the Sheriff's Office, which, as I said, was the second year in a row he achieved that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, under special presentations, number four, motion to approve Resolution 2020-3, resolution in support of existing fire and rescue commission certification. Is Steve?
Oh, there's him.
Thank you, Steve.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, appreciate you giving me a few minutes to come before you today. As you're aware, I'm the president of the Fireman Association, and the state of North Carolina is making some changes to the training certification program for firefighters. Wayne County has always been in the forefront when it comes to training. As volunteer firemen, we'd like to make sure our firemen get the same certification as paid firefighters do. We do the same job, we should have the same training. Over the years, we've been able to get this certification through Wayne Community College, through classes that are proposed or set up by the Office of State Fire Marshal. Most of these classes were 12, 16, 20-hour classes, and some of them were 40-hour classes. The state is proposing a change to go to a block system, which means the shortest amount of time you'll spend in class is 24 hours, all the way up to 40 hours, as opposed to eight, 12, and 20. This puts a strain on the volunteer firefighter. Most of them are married, have kids, they work eight to five, they go to school at night and on the weekends, to do everything they can to get these certifications, and we feel that this change that the state is proposing is going to be detrimental to the training of volunteer firefighters in Wayne County and throughout the state. We have sent a letter to the Office of State Fire Marshal, when I say we, the Wayne County Fireman Association, and we're asking you to support the letter that we have sent in to the State Fire Marshal.
Any questions?
Just want to thank Steve for presenting this to us, and as anyone that's in the volunteer fire service, it's getting harder and harder to get volunteers. I mean, 50 years ago, when a lot of these fire departments were formed, most of them were farmers. They were close by, they could leave, they could go take care of things, but that's not the case anymore. I mean, and fighting fire is a young person's job. We have male and female firefighters in the county now, and all of them do an outstanding job, but they're already sacrificing so much being away from their families to volunteer to help their neighbors and their fellow man. And certainly, we want to provide the training, but there's a limit on what they can do and continue to volunteer in an organization like that. And again, I just, I want to thank all of the volunteers in the county. They do an outstanding job. They're providing a service that the county cannot afford to pay for, and anything that we can do to help ease the pain or the burden on them to get their training, and like Steve says, you know, we all need training. But I appreciate you and the Firefighters Association for stepping up, and also all over the state. I mean, Wayne County is not the only one that has concerns with this. My understanding is that other counties all over the state are experiencing the same problems, some probably even more than we are. But again, just want to thank y'all and the Firefighters Association for taking the stand on this.
Yes, sir.
I can't say much anymore than what Commissioner Rettke just said, and I know the difficulty there in Sauson, because I'm close to those guys over there, and they struggle to be able to find volunteers to spend all that time. My question would be, are there other counties that are doing this similar thing, or, you know, the more voices you have, the lower the-
Yes, sir. To my knowledge, there is a few more counties that have, I'm not sure how many, I'm hearing several, but I know of two that I know of personally that have expressed the same concerns. It has caused the Office of State Fire Marshal to have several meetings with each county. Wayne County Chief's Council met with them last Thursday. The meeting was informative, but we were pretty much told, it is what it is, you know, we're going to do the, we're going to make the change. And they could never give us, I asked a question, why, you know, is it an NFPA mandate? No, it's not. There's nothing that mandates they have to make these changes, it's what they feel is going to make things easier for the training. Where they got their information from, I don't think it came from volunteer firefighters, and I think that's part of the problem, is that we don't really have a really good voice on the North Carolina Cert Board. Our Chief's Council has talked about this numerous times, and, you know, we see, not only is it going to inhibit the firemen from getting the training they need, it's going to hurt us with retention and recruitment. Because if a firefighter joins up now at 18, 20 years old, and he now knows he has to go to classes that are 40 hours long, it's going to be hard to get him to go, him or her to go. You're middle-aged, who's got a wife and kids, or a husband and kids, it's going to be harder, even extremely harder for them to go. And we just don't think that this system is the right thing for volunteers. We're not against the new block system whatsoever, it may actually work for a paid department that runs an academy, but for the volunteers, it's not going to work. We're not asking them to do away with the new system, we're asking them to run both systems at the same time, and let the department choose which training they want. If a volunteer department wants the block system, then they can get it. If they want the single class system, they can get it. That's all we're asking. When I ask them to do away with the system, just maintain the one we already have.
It just sounds to me like they're trying to make their job easier instead of yours. Sorry to say that, but I fully support this.
Would you like me to read the resolution?
Right quick, it's, the college is set up to go either way. I mean, the college can teach the 40-hour classes, or they can teach the 12-hour classes. I mean, we've got qualified people at the college, and there's no doubt Dr. Walker and the staff out there is in agreement to whatever, they want to offer whatever the volunteer service and the paid service needs. So, the problem is not with the community colleges, it's, as Steve said, it's a board that probably consists of not enough volunteer people, and I don't know that, I'm just assuming that now, I'm not, don't hold me to that.
You are correct on the college aspect of it, because the college is going to teach what the state allows them to teach, and the new system is what the state's going to allow them to teach. When they cut off the old system, the college will be no longer allowed to teach the old system. And yes, you are correct about the Cert Board as well.
Mr. Doherty. Steve, thanks for enlightening us today. I suppose the first question I have is, when did this proposed change come about? When was it first introduced?
Well, it's my understanding that it started back in July. It was not finalized, if I'm correct, October 10th. Yeah, October 10th is when the emails were sent out to fire chiefs, fire marshals, community colleges that this effect would take, change would take effect July 1st, 2020. So, from now to July 1st, 2020, we're still running both systems. They did put a stipulation in that they're going to run the old system originally to December 31st, 2020, they've gone back and now changed that to December 31st, 2021. So, we got 24 months for the changeover to actually take complete effect.
God bless for what y'all do in volunteer fire. But the point is, that even someone that's not a volunteer fireman can understand why this is dramatically going to affect your ability to recruit or retain volunteers.
Yes, sir.
Who possibly could come up with a system that would require a volunteer to take 50 hours, is that correct?
Forty is the longest.
Forty.
Yes, sir.
Forty hours of time, so you're going to be taking a whole week off of work in order, because it's got to be a block, correct?
Correct.
All together. I mean, you just can't, there's a lot of firemen that are going to have to give up that volunteer.
Well, even in, with the system we have now, we don't run them five days in a row, because most people can't take all five days from work to go train for a volunteer position that they don't get paid for. We run them over a period of two or three weeks, depending on how long the class is and how the fire department wants to set it up.
Sure.
But still, you're looking at 40 hours over a three-week period, is what sometimes it gets spread out over that length of time, so that the fireman can come on Monday night when they normally train, and maybe Wednesday night when they normally don't. That affords the firemen to be able to make it at night, as opposed to doing eight to five Monday through Friday.
With something as this dramatic on the change and the requirements, I would urge us all to support that, and anything else that we can do, if the county manager, our chairman can meet with a representative from the Fire Marshal Service or whatever to actually promote this, anything we can do to help, we need to do it.
Yes, sir.
Because without you volunteers, I don't know what we would do.
Mr. Chairman. Yes. Mr. Fire Marshal, Brian, Steve's done a good job, but is there anything that we've missed that, we all want to be on board with this now, we want to all be on the same page.
I don't think Steve's missed anything. Steve's been, he's been great to keep everybody informed and the process, that kind of thing. So, we're at a point now where, like Steve said, we had that meeting last Thursday night, everybody in the room expressed their concerns, and at the end of the night, we really didn't get anywhere. So, what our next move is, is to have you guys do a resolution, as Commissioner Daughery has said, you know, any support that we can get from you guys moving forward. You know, we've met with a representative already, expressed our concerns there, so he's given us some direction of kind of where to go, and that's kind of led us to this point.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. President. And also, you know, like I said earlier, we already have a problem recruiting volunteers, it's just not as easy as it used to be. But if we can't get the volunteers, this is a service that the county is going to have no choice but to have to take over, and we don't, we don't want it. I mean, you know, the volunteers are doing a fantastic job, the fire departments are, they've got top-notch equipment, and, but I'm just going to throw out a figure, but if it gets to the point that we can't recruit the volunteers to do this, and we have to put paid people in these stations, we're going to probably get less coverage, because the county cannot afford to maintain what we've got, 24 stations, departments now, we've got more buildings than that. The county cannot afford to maintain that many fire stations. And we, I'm just going to throw out a figure, Allison, you might help me here, if we can't keep the volunteers, you're looking at probably a 10-cent increase on your property tax. Think about that now, because maintaining fire departments, when you've got, when you have to start paying for it, it can get expensive. I think what we're saying here, just my comment, and we'll move on, thank you for what you do, but what we're saying is, is that if the state is basically recommending that if they go through with this, it's going to start the process of putting the voluntary fire service out of business eventually, it has that potential.
I agree with that, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, any other comments? Steve?
Would you like Steve to read the resolution?
Yes, I would, yes.
Whereas volunteer firefighters are vital to ensure the safety of the public in Wayne County and surrounding counties, and whereas the Wayne County Board of Commissioners understands volunteer firefighters of Wayne County are critical to the safety and quality of life to all citizens, and whereas certification as a firefighter in North Carolina, though voluntary, is the only way for fire chiefs to ensure firefighters are properly trained and held to the national standard, and whereas the Fire and Rescue Commission's Certification Board passed new rules that create what the Wayne County Firefighter Association believes would be a major roadblock for volunteers to complete certification classes, and whereas the new system changes single subject classes to a block system, which will lengthen the time firefighters will be in class and add additional testing at the end of the classes, and whereas while the Wayne County Firefighter Association recognizes this new system as ideal for larger cities and paid fire department personnel, recognizes it will create a hurdle for recruiting volunteers for the volunteer fire service. Now, therefore, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners hereby support the Wayne County Firefighter Association's request to keep the single system, single class system in place in conjunction with the proposed new block system, which is beneficial to larger cities and paid departments.
Okay, Preface of Board, Mr. Rettke.
I make a motion, we send our resolution to the proper authorities in Raleigh and encourage other counties to do the same thing. Have a motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, is there any other discussion? All in favor of the resolution, raise your right hand, please, we're unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, on behalf of the Wayne County Fireman Association, we thank you for your support.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Honeycutt?
Thank you, Chairman. Number five, under special presentation, is special events by services on aging director Paula Edwards.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing me to be here today and to share with you and the public about some upcoming activities that we have at the Senior Center. Actually, this next Wednesday, on January 29th, at 8:30 a.m., we will be having our second annual Senior Center Super Bowl Classic. Come dressed in your NFL gear, team's gear, whichever one you choose, they don't have to be ones that are playing the Super Bowl, and compete in the Cornhole Super Bowl Tournament, and this event is free for our Senior Center members, but you must sign up with your teammate or partner by tomorrow, January 22nd. Last year, I will tell you, we had 23 teams to compete, and it was really, really good and very competitive among the seniors, so we had a great time, and we're looking forward to it next week as well. The North Carolina Arts Council is sponsoring two events at the Peggy Seeger Senior Center through the Grassroots Arts Sub Grant. The first one that they are sponsoring is to celebrate Valentine's Day with the Starlight Dance Band performing on February 7th, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., and this is on a Friday. And this event is free for the seniors that are 50 and older, can attend, and enjoy their music and dance, or sit back and relax. Also, this grant will be sponsoring an opportunity for us to celebrate Black History Month, and we will be doing this by the monitors coming out to perform on Fridays, February 21st, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. And this event is also open for seniors 50 and older. And then, we will be having our Senior Games Health Fair on Friday, February 7th, from 8:30 to 11:30 at the Peggy Seeger Senior Center, and this is a kickoff event for the Senior Center Games, I mean, the Senior Games for Wayne County, and registration forms will be available on that day. There'll be free health screenings, there'll be over 30 vendors that will be there with information relating to seniors and their health, we'll have a free bagged lunch, door prizes will be there as well, and it will be free and open to the public, 50 and older. And that's why I'm here also today, is to present to you about the Senior Games that will be coming up this year, and to introduce to you the Senior Games Ambassador, Pauline Gasaway, and I'm asking her to come up, and she's here to share with you a little bit about the Senior Games this year, and she is the Senior Games Ambassador, and she has company as well, and she will introduce them. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, and other Commissioners. Thank you for this time on the calendar for us to present to you the 2020 Games, and to give a brief update of 2019, so we won't, we're going to go pretty fast here, but I will also like to bring up my fellow ambassadors. We have four ambassadors, come up ladies, and they will introduce themselves, and over here we have-
I'm Terry Wright. I've been ambassador since 2012.
And next to Terry is-
Janice Simmons. This will be my second year as an ambassador to the Senior Games.
Thank you, ladies, and I would just like to say and remind everyone that the Senior Games continue to offer quality recreation and competitive activities for 50 and above. And I know you all have heard this over the years, so we're not going to continue that road. But also, I'd like to say, on behalf of Stacia Fields, who is the coordinator for the Wayne County Senior Games, she can't be in two places at the same time, so as ambassador, on her behalf, we will present to you an overview of 2020. Starting on February 7th, the registration forms will be available, and it will be during the time, as Paula stated, of the Senior Games Health Fair. We will have a booth there, a senior game booth will be there, and information will be available for anyone who may have questions. Now, before I continue with anything, the main goal this year, we would like to increase the participation. We did very well last year, 2019, it was like 341. Now, that was good, but we want to exceed that this year. And Janice Simmons will speak to you about the new incentive that we came up with in order to address the increase in participation. Janice, would you like to speak on that for a couple of minutes, please?
Last year, by my calculation, we had an increase of about 20% in participation. This year, we'd like to do as well. So, we have added a new feature to our registration packet, and we call it the Bring a Friend feature. And how that works is, any current participant who recruits or encourages a new participant, that new participant on her registration form will tell the name of the person who encouraged or recruited him or her. That person's name will be put in a drawing, and if they win, they'll get a gift certificate. Now, I wish we'd had that feature last year, because I had five new people. So, this year, I still hope to get five new people, but that's our one new feature, and we hope that it will be enough to increase us again by about 20%.
Okay, thank you so much. And as ambassador, that's exactly what we will be doing. Our role is to be going out into the communities, taking registration forms out to different agencies, doctors' offices, public places, and now, we'll have Ms. Terry talk to you briefly about what her status is at the Senior Center, because she plays a major role at Peggy Seeger Senior Center. And I have to give it to Terry, about two-thirds of the registration forms are actually taken in at the Senior Center, and she does great work there. So, briefly, just tell the Commissioners how you go about doing that, and what your goal is this year, Terry.
My goal is to get- My goal is to get more, and I will be stationed at the Peggy Seeger Center out in the front, and we hope to do a good job, and this is where the time begin, the game begin. Thank you.
Let the games begin, right? Now, on to the registration form, real quickly. They will be available, as Paula stated, February 7th, during the Senior Games Health Fair. We will present the information to them, and hopefully, we can increase that number. Now, the eligibility remains the same. A person must be 50 and above in order to participate. The good thing, last year, we actually had that increase in the younger 50, and we're hoping to increase the categories while we can increase first timers, as Janice was talking about. The deadline for registration is March 1st, 2020. Now, I don't think Stacia Fields will have a problem accepting registrations on Monday because the deadline is on Sunday. So I think if anyone walks into her office with the registration form, she will be so happy to receive it. Lastly, I'd like to talk about the locations. We will be utilizing many of the facilities around the city. We will start out at the Peggy Center, Peggy Seeger Center, then we would venture to the Bryan Multi-Complex, the Foster Center, and we would like to invite you all to participate. If not, maybe you will be in the community and you'll get to see us in all the different locations. Mount Olive, the Carver Cultural Center, Herman Park, of course, Goldsboro Municipal Park. I know you like golf, so maybe just during your lunch break, scoot out there and kind of see the men and the women hitting that little ball. So once again, we want to thank you all for this time. We appreciate it, and we hope to see you out there. If not, next year, you will see us again. Thank you very much, and if you have any questions, we will be very happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I like, I like your description. I'm gonna say this, thank you for the update, but I like your description. Everything you describe, you say 50 and up. That makes me feel real good.
Young people.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the floor up for public comments. I'd like to remind ones that, that come up that we, we need your name, address, and phone number. So at this time, our floor is open for public comments. Would anyone like to come up and speak? Come up to the podium, please. Anyone like to speak during our public comment time? Okay, I declare our public comment time closed. Mr. Honecutt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next is the Appointment Committee.
Mr. Chairman, we have two reappointees this morning. This is a recommendation from the Appointment Committee. The first one is Ms. Beverly Bale, a reappointment to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Committee, and that is in the form of a motion from the Appointment Committee.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. All opposed, motion carries.
The second one, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Julie Daniels is a reappointment to the Wayne County Development Alliance Association, and that is in the form of a motion from the Appointment Committee.
We have a motion on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries.
That's all we have today, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Honecutt?
Thank you, Chairman. Next is the Consent Agenda, and we did go over the consent agenda during our pre-agenda workshop with the board. If there's no questions, we present this for your consideration.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Okay, have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Are there any questions or concerns from Commissioners? All in favor of the consent agenda, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries.
All right, thank you, Chairman. We do have a couple of things under New Business. Number one is motion to approve the amendment to the contract with Coastal Plains Clearing LLC on April 30th, 2019, to an additional stream segments at a total cost of $114,563.30 to be reimbursed to the County of Wayne by the State Disaster Recovery Program upon completion of the work. And Ashley Smith, our Soul and Water Director, is here, and if she would like to come up, and if you have any questions. I do want to publicly thank Ashley and her staff. There's been a lot of grants and, and a lot of streams that you have seen that we're, that's been completed, and the cleanout has to be monitored. And Ashley and her staff have done a great job, and we do want to thank you for the work that y'all have done, but also for the grant administration and getting the funding for these projects.
Thank you.
Do you have some comments?
Yes, so they asked me to kind of give y'all an idea of where we've been so far. So I got a few things together. As of January, we have cleaned out 78.45 miles in Wayne County of streams. And what we're looking for approval on today adding is an additional 35.86 miles. Now, in the first 78.45 miles that we have completed, that has brought grant money in from the State, State Disaster Recovery Fund, as well as two different grants from Golden Leaf Foundation, in a total of 675,000, 675,075.52 cents. So that is money that we've brought into the county so far, plus the, the amount that, you know, we're adding today at the 114. Did y'all have any questions for me?
Any, any questions from any of the? I would suppose, could you go or have the slide brought up in regards to what projects we're talking about on this?
The ones that we're adding?
That's right. The ones we're adding. We can go through.
Next. The list or the map?
Well, the list, maybe show us some of the map.
Okay.
Let's go through the list first.
So there's Exum Mill Branch, which feeds back to the slough that we've already completed, that feeds back to Nahana that we're currently working on. So anytime we pick an area, whether we get calls from citizens, or it's an area we've been out to and we already know there's a problem, or maybe it was a problem during Matthew, we like to take that water, not only from that area, but take it all the way back to somewhere else we've cleaned out, so that it doesn't just go and then stop. It continues to go to, get it as far, get it to the county line as far as we can. So there's Exum Mill. We're working on Nahana, which is about 19 miles when you look, have it broken into four segments because we don't want them to have to do 19 miles before we pay them. But there's the four segments of Nahana that stretches across the whole northern part of the county. There is, the, there's the Blue Line Stream at, off of Highway 111, it's near Cottonwood Drive. I don't remember the name of that subdivision there, but they've had some drainage problems there. This would help, it's the main drainage line that comes out of that subdivision, and we, we take it over a mile down that stream segment. There's, there's the canal from Clarence Nursery Road to Little River. That is one that we have left to do. Now, some of the ones we have left to do were already approved back in April when we did the contract to begin with, and y'all approved it. But the canal from Clarence Nursery Road is, there's a church on Clarence Nursery Road that flooded. That, that gets that canal that goes back to Little River, and Little River, we've already completed, so that's to help, to help that area. The Howell Road, Blue Line to the canal, that is, it's over in the Rosewood area. We've had some calls out there with some drainage issues. And then, we've had quite a few calls out near, like Buck Swamp Road, Fallen Brook, out that area. That's where our, the Mill Creek, Perkins Road, Livingston Drive, Kelly Drive, it's multiple, multiple air, it's multiple drainage areas that all eventually flow back to Little River. They all feed back into each other, and we're taking them back to Little River that we've already completed. We have an area on 111 South, it's near the sand and gravel place out there. They've had a lot of problems with flooding up into their yard and things like that. We've been able to reach that one, or we will be able to reach that one. And there's also a Blue Line north of Smith's Chapel Road. That's the one that Mount Olive had some concerns about as well. And so I've been talking with the, the manager of Mount Olive with that, and he knows that we were able to get that segment on his list. Horseprint Branch starts up around Arrington Bridge Road and comes back all the way to Williams Pond on Highway 55 at Mount Olive. And there's the Blue Line Lane Tree Road to Perkins Drive, that's another part up off of Buck Swamp Road in that area. Perkins Road, I think, is another one. And then, C.R. Lewis Road to the Noose, that's off of, like, Bill Lane Boulevard and 111. There's an area out there that we've, we've had some calls, and Thomas has been on multiple drainage calls out there. So they're kind of spread all over the county.
And, excuse me, and in cleaning it out, you're talking about actually going in and actually pulling limbs and?
Yes, so it's?
Things that have accumulated in that water?
Yes, any woody vegetation that's obstructing flow.
So you're not digging out any of the canal or trench area, you're just removing debris?
Removing debris, to at least allow it to come, come through without, you know, all that stuff obstructing it, so.
Any other?
One, one question. Oh, Mr. Chairman, back to the one on the Blue Line on 111 to Howell Creek?
Yes.
At Highway 111. Is that the creek just before you get to the river, just north of the river on 111? I don't know where, it used to be Daley's Store?
Um, I don't know, it's not, it's, um?
Chip, with your background and planet, is that, I don't even know what name of that creek is.
Off the top of my head, I think it's Woodbury Lane.
The, is that, you're talking about Highway 111 to Howell's Creek, or are you talking about the Woodbury, the Woodbury Lane?
It's the one, it's the one just north of the Neuse River on 111 South.
That's Woodbury.
Yeah, that's Woodbury.
I've had some calls on that one. I mean, that's true, I'm asking the question.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it's out there at Slick Rock Road in Woodbury.
That's it, that's it.
Yes, that's the one we're doing.
Okay, good, good.
We do have that one.
Mr. Carmody?
They, down in Mount Olive, the Blue Line, is that, is that over there behind Crest Drive?
Yes.
Tell us a little bit about that, and what's the status of it, and?
Well, that is, that's the one that says Smith's Chapel Road to Lee's Country Club. That's the one behind the Crestview Drive that the Mount Olive managers has talked with us about, and we've had calls from citizens, too. We are currently working on Nahana, and as soon as we're finished with Nahana, that one is next on our list to reach.
What, there's a feeling that just cleaning out some limbs or something is not going to cure that problem. And I, I realize that you have the limitations about the Blue Line status and all the bureaucracy it takes to do something with Blue Line, but I would like for someone to determine if, and I'm not an engineer, but when the road was built, when all that was built through there, I would like for someone to be able to tell the public if there were some mistakes made by somebody in terms of, 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 a lady that lives right in that area there, clearly you look at the yard, and, and when it rains, it, it, it does some awful things to her yard, and not just her, but a lot of folk in that area. And, and I know I might be mixing apples and oranges and pears together, but when David Harris was here some weeks ago, he made a reference to dollars that may be used to, y'all love to use that word mitigation, prevention of flooding and all that. Actually, I know it may not be exactly in your responsibility lane, but whatever you could, if there's any possible connection between those dollars and the opportunity to slice some of those dollars towards where you all are, I would like for us to talk about that, because, you know, you're dealing with a few hundred thousand dollars, and it sounds like there's a million dollars left somewhere out of that, out of the dollars for hurricane and all that. Those folk, that flood is not going away down there. That, that problem is not going away. And each time I talk to someone, they can take us back for years when there were promises made, or thoughts made, or conversations or something, so let's talk about that sometime.
Okay.
When you got a minute, all right. But thank you for what you all are doing. I know you've been busy at it, but it's just such a larger problem.
So any other comments? I have one, Ashley. I don't know if you've looked at your emails this morning, you got one for me. Is that?
That is?
Is that on the list?
It's, um, it's not on the list of what you're adding today, because it was added in April of 19, when we did the contract. It is on the list to be completed.
It is already on the list, okay.
It's already on the list, which is why it wasn't on there today.
Yeah, there's a citizen that sent me an email asking about a certain area, and I'm just doing it public, and maybe he's listened to our broadcast today, I don't know.
I called him.
Okay, you already got it?
Yeah, I called him.
Thank you so much. Any other comments?
So when we finish the, these, the 35.86 miles we have left to do, that'll be a total for Wayne County of 114.31 miles, and once we're finished, it will also be 1,020,482.79 that we're able to bring to the county.
One, one last question.
Mm-hmm.
Are you having problems with any landowners having a problem with you all crossing their land, or?
Most people are welcoming it because it's not costing them money and it's helping a problem. Every once in a while, you get someone that doesn't want it, but for the most part, most people are very welcoming to it.
And maybe this is a question for our manager. Do we still have the Beaver?
Yes.
Man contract in place?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
We do.
Because I know I was asked about, that subject came up also, and sometimes you try to get all the questions answered when there's somebody to raise that challenge. Okay.
Yes, we saw that contract. We saw that. And Ashley says I had here, and he brought that up. There was one over there on Mill Creek that I never get taken care of, and it always crossed that property.
Mill Creek?
Crossed from Monocreek.
Yes, um?
There was one landowner that was dead, dead Monocreek.
Oh, yes, that was Mill Run.
Yeah, Mill Run, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, okay, I had to think about it, a lot of miles. Yeah, we just skipped, we, there was two, and we skipped those two properties, and we cleaned out the rest.
Yeah, to your point, I just don't know why they went along, but Monocreek cleaned out.
There's always a few.
Okay, thank you, Ashley, very much. We have, what's the purpose of the board? We need a motion here.
So?
Okay, we have a motion to approve the amendment for the contract to Coastal Plains Clearing LLC on April 30th, 2019, for a total cost of 114,563.30. And we have a motion on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand, please.
We're talking about number, still number one?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. All right. Motion approved.
I didn't want you to pull nothing over there.
No. Okay, Mr. ...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
On our next item on the agenda, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution declaring Wayne County Board of Commissioners in favor of the Second Amendment to the Constitution of the United States as written.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. I'm going to ask for comments, but this time I'm going to make, I want to ask the first question as chairman, okay? But we will open up for commissioners' comments. I want to, I want to ask legal opinion from Mr. Boyd and Parker. Mr. Parker, this Second Amendment resolution that we're looking at, your interpretation of will it change the existing Second Amendment in our constitution? Will it change the Second Amendment statutes for the state of North Carolina? And secondly, will this restrict guns, property owners having guns to protect their property? And also, do you see anything that will open up future issues possibly with guns being taken away from citizens? In other words, is there anything in here that relates to those things?
No, sir. There's not. This is being supportive of the current state and federal constitution.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Now I open it up to commissioners' comments. Anyone want to speak? Mr. Bell?
Yes, well, what I would like, the Second Amendment right now, I support the Second Amendment again with what I said at first, so anybody won't get confused. My house is full of guns. Now, what I want to know is, during this resolution, I have two questions. What does it do to the present Second Amendment, the way it is stated right now? What... Just what good is the resolution going to do to the Second Amendment?
And...
What's the purpose of it, really?
Purpose of the resolution is to indicate that the Board of Commissioners supports the Second Amendment to the Constitution.
Well, I understand that part. We already support the Second Amendment. I just want to know what would this resolution do? What would it change for the citizenry of Wayne County?
I don't believe anything other, I don't believe anything other than they would understand that the Board of Commissioners supports the Second Amendment to the Constitution and the North Carolina Constitution.
I thought we already support the Second Amendment. Anybody up here that doesn't support the Second Amendment?
Okay.
I just don't quite understand. And the other third, the third thing that I have is that I understand that a group of people was using intimidation against this board if we don't approve this resolution. Now, I don't buy that. We did not get elected by a group of people to tell us when to vote, how to vote, and what to vote for. And if any commissioner on this board that is complying with such intimidation, then he's on the wrong board. Now, I really have a lot to say, but I understand that the time won't allow. When I went to combat in Korea and in Vietnam, I fought for the Second Amendment. I fought for the citizens of this county and this state and this country to have the right to exercise the Constitution of the United States of America. I did not go to combat in Vietnam and that was the worst place. As a matter of fact, I'm suffering from Agent Orange right now, thanks to the Vietnam War. And folks, let me tell you, if you ever get contaminated with Agent Orange, it's no fun. But I'm going back to this board right here. I cannot believe that the board that I sit on is willing to throw our Sheriff Department under the bus, Police Department, for what reason? Nobody haven't given me a reason, didn't even discuss it with me. I don't even know what's going on, to tell you the truth. This board was elected to make decisions for the citizenry of Wayne County, not take threats and intimidation from groups of people. Now, I don't know why this resolution thing is coming up, but just because nobody can explain it to me as to why we need this resolution real educational and professionally, I will not be voting for this resolution. I spent my time in Korea and Vietnam and I already support the resolution, support the Second Amendment. And I just don't, I think there's an ulterior motive behind this resolution thing that nobody's not saying. I think what it's going to do, I think it's going to have people walking in the restaurants, supermarkets, churches and their places with firearms strapped to the side. Everybody have a right to the Second Amendment and that gun should be at home. We have a Sheriff Department and I think a good Sheriff Department, Police Department that's capable of protecting you and your family if something go wrong out there. And then another thing, too. If you end up strapping a gun to your side and go out there to a restaurant and shoot somebody, the Sheriff Department is going to come and arrest you. I guarantee you that.
Okay.
I think that's all I want to say for right now.
Thank you. Any other comments from any other commissioners? Anyone have anything?
Mr. Chairman.
You have a minute, Kamarty.
To add some historical context to this, my understanding, the forming of the militias had to do with the Revolutionary War in that timeframe. And of course, as the United States would fight for independence, there was not the kind of standing military that we have at Seymour Johnson, Fort Bragg with 82nd, Camp Lejeune with the military, and of course, right here in Wayne County with our Sheriff Department. So a lot of folks say that this Second Amendment and to reinforce it with a resolution is to ensure that we have our arms to protect our families. But as it stands right now, when I'm riding out through the countryside and of course, I think maybe of January the 15th, the hunting season was over, but I saw plenty of folk with weapons and dogs and everything that looked like they could very well protect themselves with what was available at this time. So I don't think that deer hunting, the hunting population has been inhibited up to this point with the opportunity to have the weapons that they wanted. Often times when we think of adding something, something has been taken away. That we see that the danger of something intimately being taken away needs to have some correction. I have not had an opportunity from someone here on this board or anyone else in Wayne County to share with us something that is in danger of being taken away, therefore needing to add a resolution. I would be concerned that to put emphasis on a resolution that had to do with the suggestion that we needed more weapons or that the weapons that we have are not sufficient, might encourage someone that the proliferation of weapons would increase. I would only want to bring to this board's attention that your colleagues who may want this resolution may not be looking down the road at people who may not have the same ability to make clear decisions, folk with mental problems or gangs. Now, for every citizen who feels like that they would carefully manage their weapons, there are probably people out in the community who would use and abuse the opportunity to have more weapons or to feel like that weapons were made easier to get, to carry and so forth. I would like for all of us to consider what you're asking that may enhance the use of guns and the demonstration of guns or the carrying of guns to be put in folks' hands that you may not want to see. I would like to bring this as a possible problem. We are constantly concerned that anything that we may do could cause our military base to be in danger of being moved. Now, there's a possibility and none of us can say definitely yes or no, but when we get the attention that has been shared upon Richmond, Virginia, when that same attention comes to Wayne County and the decision makers have to make a decision about keeping bases like Seymour Johnson and Camp Lejeune and all that, you don't know exactly how the federal government will interpret this kind of a resolution and what impact it may have. So as you make decisions concerning these kinds of resolutions, I think maybe we need to be concerned about how it affects the entire population of a county and all the implications that it could have from a negative standpoint that we do not intend. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments?
I just want to say, Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to make any comments on this. My phone number is on the county website. Anyone who wants to call me, we'll talk about it one-on-one. I'd be glad to talk to you, but I'm not going to make any comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I have, I have one and I'm, at the end, I want to refer back to our council. I have, I have and am a proponent that we need to have more controls of assault weapons available to the public, especially possibly some people that may have some issues like criminal records or mental issues, that we need to keep these weapons out of these people's hands. So I'm also a believer in the Second Amendment that it was meant for us to protect our properties at home. I want my weapons at home. If there is a home invasion at my house, I can tell you that my family and I are prepared. So having said that, Mr. Parker, and I'm just a layperson, a common sense guy, but I do not see anything in this resolution that we're considering today that would inhibit any future controls, especially of assault weapons. Do you see anything in here that would inhibit that?
Not in Wayne County. I don't think you have the authority to inhibit any of that at all.
Right.
You can keep it out of built, you can decide that you're not going to have weapons and buildings that you own.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? I called a question. Okay, we have in front of us a revolution, the resolution for the Second Amendment to the Constitution of the United States. We have a motion on the floor. All in favor of this resolution signify by raising your right hand. All opposed? Motion passes five, four, and two against. Motion carries. Mr. Panikat?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things I wanted to mention. We are still moving forward with the sales tax discussion with our municipalities. We do have a meeting tonight with the city of Goldsboro at their commissioners' or council members' meeting that we will ask for their approval. We also will be this week at Walnut Creek on January 22nd. So if you would like to attend, I'll try to give everybody out a calendar of the next sales tax meetings, but they are moving forward. And we do have one scheduled with Pikeville for February 3rd. So I'll give you the complete list and that is all I have at this time. Oh, the other thing with the Fire Association meeting is tonight at Lane Tree, beginning at 7:00. All our commissioners are invited. I'll be late. I think the chairman's planning to get to Goldsboro with me for the sales tax, but I wanted to mention that as well. So thank you.
Mr. Gurley?
I'll be at Lane Tree tonight. I saw.
Okay. Mr. Kamarty?
No other comments? Hopefully. Be at Lane Tree.
Mr. Page?
Nothing. Put it out.
Okay. Mr. Bell?
No comment.
Boy, we're off for quite the day, aren't we? Let's do it. Take off. Just, just like to follow up on what the chairman said about the firefighters' installation of offers tonight at Lane Tree. They usually do a good job and I'd like for as many commissioners as to go. And I understand why the county manager and the chairman has got to be in Goldsboro because that's a very important issue also. But I'd like to encourage as many commissioners as to can go tonight because, like I said earlier, this group provides a service that Wayne County cannot afford to pay for. And they usually have a good meal and they usually try to keep it as short as it can, but you know, it's, they do an outstanding job. And that's all the comments I've got today, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Doudar?
I do have some comments. First, I want to make sure that everyone is aware that to my knowledge, no member on this board has been pressured or intimidated by anyone regarding the resolution to support the Second Amendment to the United States. I would simply ask if I would review it as other counties in North Carolina have passed. I did. I asked staff to find a copy of a county that in fact had passed this resolution. To my knowledge, there are 14 counties in North Carolina that have passed this resolution. I asked our council to review it and to make sure that there was nothing in here that in any way would prohibit any future legislation of North Carolina and that it in no way would in fact intimidate anyone, but simply would state that we, this board, stands for the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution. Never in my wildest dreams would I have imagined that I would have been attacked so drastically over a simple resolution of in fact supporting the Constitution of the United States. Now, I've taken a great bill of abuse and with that I have been silent, but you know, my silence may have encouraged some of this bullying. I support many. I suppose many may think that I should just go along to get along and keep my mouth shut. But today I'm not going to do that. I'm going to tell you how I feel about this. If anyone sees this as distasteful, well, so be it. Bullying is wrong. Plain and simple, it's wrong. We must all respect each other's opinions and recognize that those opinions may differ from ours. We must respectfully, respectfully agree to disagree. A board is comprised, this board, of seven members and all of us have different ideas, come from different backgrounds, and as such, the board is made up that way for a purpose so that we can all contribute. so that we can all contribute different ideas and perceptions. I am pleased today that this board has in fact voted to approve the resolution to support the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution. It is also stated in the first article of the North Carolinian Constitution. The News and Observer reported on Friday, the seventeenth, that fifty members of the Republican House Caucus, including Speaker Tim Moore and Majority Leader John Bell, supported Second Amendment sanctuaries. Lieutenant Governor Dan Farst stated, and here's his quote, "The Second Amendment secures all of the rights enshrined in our Constitution. I stand with the North Carolina counties that are affirming our rights to keep and bear arms," end quote. It is my belief that all should stand in support of this. Now we get into the gory details. On Saturday, I was called by Commissioner Acock and harshly attacked for proposing this resolution to be placed on the agenda today. Commissioner Acock continued to verbally assault me for releasing a copy of this resolution to the public. Now, this resolution was released publicly at the commissioners' retreat last Thursday. It was posted in our agenda package on Wayne County's website, as well as being released to the press. So this matter had already been released. In his outburst, he stated that he would have it pulled from the agenda and further chastise me for bringing up such a controversial issue at election time. To say the least, I was shocked by the call and stated that I would not support pulling it from the agenda, but he had every right to make that motion. Timing should not be a factor when making the decision to stand up for the rights under the Constitution. Mr. Chairman, I am not alone when I state that our rights are under assault. You can clearly see it in Virginia. Surely, people watch the news. I proudly stand for the right of gun ownership enshrined in the Constitution of the United States of America. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Could I say something else?
Yes.
Mr. Doughty is correct. I did call him. Probably said some things that I shouldn't have said. The way I look at it, this is only a piece of paper. Commissioners of Wayne County does not have any authority to make any laws for Wayne County pertaining to guns. And at the time, and I still feel like that, I don't know whether we're doing the right thing or not, I did vote for this resolution, because I'm a firm believer in the Second Amendment, and Mr. Doughty is correct. As I've been told many times, the jaw would come out in me. But, Mr. Doughty, I did vote for this resolution. And can I sit here and say that I probably shouldn't have made that phone call? I probably shouldn't have, but I did, and once water goes over the dam, you can't draw it back. But I do support the resolution. Thank you.
Mr. Bell?
Mr. Chairman, this is one of the reasons I worked so hard trying to get this board to stay on one accord. This is why I worked for the past nineteen years trying to keep this board together. Now, I don't care what you say, I'm, I believe in the Second Amendment, as I said before. There's an ulterior motive behind this resolution. They can call it what they will, amen. There's a reason why they want this resolution. We all support the Second Amendment. As I said before, my house is full of guns, and that's where they're gonna stay. If you come into my house talking about breaking in and doing home invasion, you're gonna get shot, unless I know you very well. Now, if you watch the news and if you listen to what's going on, there's probably all over this doggone country with people using the Constitution as a reason to do things. I don't hear nobody up here talking about the voting rights. Let's get people out to vote. The same group that's pushing for the, for everybody to carry arms, or let's do a resolution next time we meet to get the legislators and everybody to push voter rights. North Carolina has thirteen districts. Ten of those districts are controlled by the Republican Party because of the, the way they drew the lines. I don't hear nobody talking about that. Let's get the whole Constitution right. Let's get the whole, everything right. Nobody still haven't told me why you want that doggone resolution. I haven't heard it. So evidently, there's something going on that I don't know about you not telling me. Nobody can explain why you need a resolution to support what we all believe in. I don't think there's a commissioner up here that doesn't believe in the Second Amendment, and I haven't even questioned you on it, but I know you do. Now, tell me why you need a resolution, Mr. Chairman.
The board's already voted.
I know, you can still tell me.
Are you finished? Are you finished with your comments? I will address that.
Yeah, I'm finished.
It's sort of like, it's sort of like when any other part of the Constitution. We, as elected officials, have a right to endorse or remind the public of our rights under any part of the Constitution. This, this, to what I'm seeing, was a, was a symbol of what our Constitution says. Now, Mr. Bell, I'm not gonna get in an argument, but I will want to address how I feel about what your question is. There's a lot of things that come before this board, including this resolution, as you said, that may cause us to have concerns. Why are these people bringing this up? Why, why is this being pushed before us at this time? We have these questions all the time, but you know what? Because the majority of the board has to say so, we go along with it, and what I'm, what I'm asking here today is, this has been passed, let's wait and see what answer to your question is. Nobody on this board, I don't think anybody in the audience knows if there's an alternative motive behind this being presented. So, I'm saying, it's, it's passed, let's move on, and let's see, let's see if anything comes out of woodwork. I'm really, one of the things that changed my mind, and I had a lot of questions, is what, what our county attorney, the way he explained it this morning, that's the best I can do. Okay, I'm gonna finish my comments here. Mr. Acock, Mr. Doughty, I want to say to this whole board that outside of this board, if you guys will feel like you need to have a cup of coffee and hash this out and come to an agreement, I think you may have, that's what I would like to see, to see. I want to see this board, including, including Mr. Kamari, Mr. Bell, all of us, I want to see this board come back together. I want to see us
No way.
To put this, wait a minute, we need to put this behind us, because if we don't, it's gonna affect our quarter cent sales tax campaign that we're pushing, and it's gonna hurt all seven of us, not just five of us. So let's come back together as a board, let's get focused on what matters to the citizens of Wayne County, and whatever happens in the future to this resolution that we pass, let it play on its own. We'll deal with it when it comes, and that's all the comments I have.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Kamari.
The one thing that I will appreciate Mr. Doughty for is that he cleared up where he was concerned about the bullying. Mr. Bell, that I voted against this resolution, and I'm sure Mr. Bell had all the reasons that he stated, and I had the reasons that I stated, having nothing to do with anything called bullying or anything related to having any animosity towards any board member up here. We have duties that we must carry on, and I bet you ninety-nine point nine percent of citizens out there does not have a clue about this resolution on the front of this, this morning. Now, the resolution was put on the table, it was Mr. Bell's notorious for saying it takes four to pass something, and so it passed five to two. We had our individual reasons for what we do. Mine has to do with historical and having, exactly like I said, but I appreciate Mr. Doughty clearing that up, because based upon the vote, I would not want anyone to leave out of here and think that Mr. Bell or I had anything to do with any, bullying anybody about the way they vote. I'm a firm believer in one vote for one man, and that's what we have up here, and everyone has a right to make their decisions. Thank you, sir.
I neglected to say about how busy the county manager and I and Dr. Dunsthor at the school board, we have gone to a lot of meetings presenting the quarter cent sales tax. We've been to several municipality board meetings. We have more planned this week, we have more planned next week, it's gonna be very busy. But I would be remiss if I didn't mention, and I, and I neglected to mention this, yesterday, Commissioner Kamari and I participated in the Martin Luther King luncheon here in Wayne And I had to close in benediction, Commissioner Kamari has some comments. There's a lesson to be learned here, and the lesson that I took away yesterday from that luncheon was the fact that no matter what you thought, and I remember, I'm old enough to remember Martin Luther King. I remember him when he was in Wayne County. No matter what your thoughts were at that time, there's one thing I take away every time I go to a MLK luncheon or meeting. The fact that Dr. Martin Luther King, number one, professed to be a Christian, number two, he advocated nonviolence. Can we not learn a lesson today from his example? We can, and that's one of the things that I, I was looking last night on the news, it's been brought up what was happening in Richmond, Virginia. I thought to myself last night, this group that marched in Richmond, Virginia yesterday had the same ideas as nonviolence, because not one single person was arrested, not one. There was one because there was a lady, that she put a bandana over her face and she was arrested. But the key is, I'm talking about because of, you know, threatened, somebody being threatened or somebody said, hey, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna shoot you and all this stuff. No, the police and the sheriff up there was interviewed. So, my point is this, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter how many times we march, how many times we demonstrate, the rule that we can learn from Dr. Martin Luther King is to do it because it's our constitutional right, but also do it with nonviolence. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Chairman, we do not have another closed session or any items for closed session.
Okay. Well, we, 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 we're, we can eat breakfast before we go. Does anybody on this board have any other comments at this time? Do I?
Recess.
Yeah. At this time, we will recess the Board of Commissioners meeting and reconvene at the Farm Bureau Luncheon at twenty-four oh five North Williams Street. We are in recess at this time.